You're on a paper.
I'll be there for your board for.
Oh, I'm on my time.
Yeah.
I would.
Oh, that would be kind of like.
True.
I do feel like we're still.
We need to leave.
I know.
We didn't want to do that.
I know.
I was working out.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Very important you did it.
Well.
This is.
You might just have to back up.
We get our.
I think you're getting the phone.
Well, absolutely.
I think you're probably.
I don't know where it came from.
But I mean.
No, my mom. She's, uh.
No, it did. I mean, no.
You're probably.
Yeah, I think.
She didn't know. She didn't know what was going on.
She didn't care.
She was, uh.
I know.
She went all the way.
Oh, okay.
You got, uh.
You got your board.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe about your.
Yeah.
Is this yours or me?
No.
Judd?
How the heck are you?
Good.
We're good.
I'm over in Memorial.
No, we were at Lake House.
Oh.
So I kind of.
No, he's okay.
Or it's like a dialogue here coming.
Which is horrible. Do you not miss him?
Really?
It's fantastic.
We all.
It's raining like thirty.
I don't know.
I guess not because it's awful. It's horrible.
You're missing.
A lot of projects.
We're gonna spend a lot of.
You don't?
Other people want.
Very much.
We're all.
Down.
Anything we can do here?
He hurt my nose.
How about? Good, good. I'm glad.
The light.
Yeah.
Some people didn't have dry and rain.
What?
I.
Five minutes tops?
I was very.
That I know of.
Calling to order, the Pearwin City Council meeting for June first, two thousand and twenty-three at six P. M. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you coming out to the meeting. Um, we will start this evening with an opening ceremony by Dan Jessen. He will give us a prayer, followed by leading us in the pledge.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to meet as a civic body and as a government body to discuss the needs and welfare of Pearwin City. And we ask that we may have, um, inspiration to do the, the, the people's will and to make good and sound decisions. And i- as, as we attempt to do our best to govern this city and take care of the citizens and, and those that live here. We are grateful for the moisture we've had, for the, um, measured way that the drought, uh, that the water has come off the mountain without causing too much damage. Uh, we ask a blessing on this great place and the people who live here, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any conflicts by the city council with the agenda or personal interest in any of the items?
No.
No.
No mayor.
Okay, now I need an approval of the meeting's agenda by vote.
I'll make a, a motion to approve the agenda for tonight on June first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries. We'll now open up the meeting to public comment. This time it's been set apart for you to express your ideas, concerns, and comments, and we will limit your time to two minutes per person. All right, nobody's giving me any eye contact, so I'll take that as an answer. Um, we'll move now into our consent meeting. These are, um, items that are normally approved by one motion. So item number six, approve, approval of the corrected city council meeting minutes from April twenty-seventh.
I move that we approve the corrected city council meeting minutes from April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and I want to personally thank Kelly for taking care and making such a thorough correction in those. Thank you, Kelly.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And I did actually, I, I meant to say, um, Matt Gale is, Councilman Gale is not here this evening, so just, uh, to note that he left snow in advance, so he would not be at the meeting. Um, moving now into the action meeting, these are items that require vote. Item number seven, establish date and time of public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty-four budget. Does this have to be a separate meeting, or can we conjoin it with a city council meeting?
I think we can conjoin it, can't we?
I don't remember.
Yeah, it only has to be a separate meeting if we are doing a, uh, truth and taxation hearing. That's if we, if, if we were to trigger truth and taxation through our budget process, it's that hearing that happens in August that has to be an independent meeting all by itself. This one can absolutely be done in a normal meeting.
Okay. So in establishing the date and time, do we have that?
And it has to be done before July.
So we have to have, w- we have to have our budget adopted by June thirtieth.
Right.
We have to adopt, we have to accept, I can't remember the, the verb, or adopt the auditor certified rate before June twenty-first. The problem is, is our first meeting, which will be next Thursday, that's doable, but we probably won't have the auditor certified rate by then. It's possible. Um, but their second meeting is the day after it's due, when we have to a- approve the auditor certified rate, and just so everybody knows, we're not looking at doing a tax increase this year. So we will probably a- adopt the rate that the auditor gives us, rather than increasing it and doing, triggering truth and taxation. But what we do also have to have is a public hearing, um, that has to be noticed, um, since we, since we didn't, like, do our schedule for when these happen, we have to actually, the council has to vote when they're gonna have the public hearing on the budget, so that's what we're doing, and we're just gonna do it next week in the regularly scheduled meeting. I'll do a presentation, then we'll have a public hearing on it, and then we'll actually adopt the, the final budget on the twenty-second. That's the timeline that Kelly and Judy and I worked out, so that's pretty typical, too.
Okay.
So in essence, you're saying we need to, um, approve this time as June eighth for the.
Yep.
Public hearing.
June eighth, six o'clock, public hearing on the F Y twenty-four budget.
Go for it.
Go ahead.
Go for it. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Jane, June eighth.
I move that we approve June eighth for the public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty-four budget. At six o'clock, that date.
I'll second that motion.
In the evening.
Good, good specification.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
And we will have that available for inspection if somebody wants to come by the office and get one. I'll talk to Judy and see if we could throw it on the website as well, so people can, we wanna be transparent and, um, so the public can come and look at it. If they, if they wanna just show up at the presentation, they can do that, too, but if you wanna dig through it with a fine-tooth comb and a magnifying glass, they can do that, too.
All right, so item number eight, this is approving Armstrong Consultants as our airport project engineers. You can approach if you'd like.
Hi, I'm Judd Hill with Armstrong Consultants and Thorsten Milton with Armstrong Consultants. So Thorsten's been the one who's been doing lots of the heavy lifting for the designing, and I work with our Utah clients. Um, so there's lots of stuff that you've got in front of you. Fortunately, you're not gonna get Carpal Tummo, because everything will be electronic signatures now. Um, but there are, uh, multiple contracts that are gonna be, being signed, as well as grant applications. Um, now, the process that's happened is that we've been designing a project, and that was last year's project, so that was a standalone, uh, contract with Armstrong and the city, uh, to design the runway. Uh, we, that project ended with the bidding for going out and finding a contractor, uh, to do the work. Um, so now that we have that contract price, um, the grant amend, or the grant application that you had previously done, a preliminary grant app, that is being revised and finalized. It was great. The prices came in very competitively, low, a little bit lower than estimated, actually, which is great, because I would say, uh, ninety percent of projects this year across the West have been higher than estimated. So I've got a really great, uh, deal for this project and this construction. It's, uh, Sun Rock, uh, contractors were the low bidder, so they will be doing the work out there. So we'll be working with the signing of the contract documents, the signing of the, uh, grant application, which will be followed up, uh, pretty quickly with the grant award.
And we'll need to, um, approve Sun Rock also in, in this, with this group?
Uh, that was the award recommendation letter.
Okay, all right.
So, uh, and then there's also the contract with us, um, and that's also with this approval, that contract, so, um.
Can I, and can I say something on that, maybe for the public, as well as maybe some of the council that doesn't deal with these guys a lot? So Armstrong, Armstrong is already our consultants. It's just that as part of this project with the federal money, we have to specifically also approve them to be the engineers for this as well. We're not, like, re-signing them, uh, you know, we're, they're still our, our consultants anyways, but we just have to officially, uh, give them the award to do the engineering on this. And for those of you guys that don't know, Judd, um, and Thorsten, I didn't put a T in it this time, th- these guys are just, um, class act. They are, they're, they're amazing to work with, and so anyways, that's all I wanted to say, Judd.
Thank you. So, yeah, so there is the contract for us. It's, um, with ours, it's two hundred and eighty-four thousand, um, with an asterisk. Uh, the project is slated for ninety day, or?
Ninety.
A ninety-day project. Um, of, more than half of that cost is for onsite inspection. Uh, we're intis- we're hoping, we're working with the contractor to shave as many days as possible off of that. Uh, it doesn't change their contract price, but the sooner they finish, the sooner the airport's back open and available to the public. Um, but, so for our inspection time, it doesn't, it's not for paying ninety days. Wait, they finish in seventies and that's it, so it could significantly lower that cost, but that's the project, the anticipated cost of that. If they go longer, if something bad happened with, like, they stopped working, or they had issues as a contractor, the project went longer, any additional cost would actually be borne by the contractor. Um, so there's something in the contract called liquidated damages. Uh, don't anticipate that happening at all. Uh, this one's pretty, we got it dialed in pretty good, but just recognize that even if it went longer, there's clauses that, hey, these costs have to be incurred, but they are incurred by the contractor, not by the city, um, for any overages with that. Uh, if there are any things unexpected that happens, we will work through change orders, which would again, uh, require some type of, uh, additional signatures, additional work, uh, but we will know about that well in advance. Not anticipating it, but we're set up to deal with that. The idea with this project and with us is you all have enough to do running a city, or with the airport running, uh, the businesses out there. Um, we're an extension of your staff for this, so, um, we are taking care of whether it's the grant work and the paperwork, whether it's dealing with the contractor, we are your onsite representatives for the city. So you're definitely welcome to come out and check things out anytime during the project, um, if you're interested, but don't feel that you have to check up on the work. That's what you're paying us to do. Um, so we are definitely there as an extension of your staff to help make this as smooth as possible and as efficient as possible for the city.
Let me add, um, w- we also, part of the federal project did a, had to do an independent fee analysis to make sure that Armstrong's fees were within, within scope, so they don't just throw some random number and we just pay it no matter what, so.
Also, I think it's important to remember that Armstrong has been working for the city for twenty-something years, so, and they've always put our interests first, so I, they've done an excellent job, and I think that, uh, we're very lucky to have such a, an experienced group of people working for us and protecting our interests.
Thank you. So does anyone have any questions about the potential, the project, or, uh, what is going to be coming? Everything will, like I said, um, the one good thing to come out of COVID was the federal government got on board with electronic signatures, uh, which is great when you're having to sign fifteen, three different versions in fifteen places in each document, um, it. Uh, but they will be signed by the mayor, and some of the, uh, the grant offers will also have to have the, uh, city attorney, uh, have a signature as well, but those will be all electronic-based signatures. Questions, comments, concerns, general public? Do y'all have any questions, comments, concerns on airports?
You can tell they're very good at communicating.
I have a question. Is this in the budget then?
Yes, yes. This has been, this is our portion of, of the grant was.
So it's matched with, okay.
Our, our portion of five percent of, of the total cost.
Yeah.
We've already budgeted that.
It's the, the expense. The expenses will, will occur.
Next fiscal.
In next fiscal year, and we, we, it is in there in the capital projects fund. That was one of the things we talked about.
So this is the city's portion?
No, no, no.
No.
No, no, no. The, the city's portion is roughly five percent of the whole. This is how much they will get paid.
This is the whole. Okay.
Five percent of what was it, nineteen?
Uh, the construction.
The cost?
Two point.
Two point something million?
Yeah.
Their cost.
So the total project cost is approximately two point four million dollars.
Right, okay.
Of that, four point six eight five percent is a local match. The federal government is issuing a grant for ninety point six three percent, or a little over two million dollar grant from the federal government, and then the state of Utah is issuing a grant for matching your local funds, so the four point six eight five.
Okay, so it, it multiplies about four times.
Nineteen to one.
Yeah.
Yeah, nineteen to one.
Yeah, mhm, okay.
If asked, does any of the council have questions about the scope, or does everyone pretty much understand? Okay, 'cause the community might ask you.
All right.
Okay, so.
I mean, it hasn't changed, has it?
No.
So, okay.
Yeah. We just wanted to make sure to be here if you had any questions, because it's a, it's a large-scale project. It's a very big project for the community. Um, it will have lasting impacts for decades, so.
Hey, real quick, do you wanna, do you wanna tell us about, because it did come in a little under budget, it'll, we're hoping to be able to do the L E D lighting, um, portion. We weren't sure whether we could do it or not. Is, is?
And that is?
Uh, yeah, for the schedule two you're talking about?
Mhm.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll get the lighting in there as well.
So originally, we had split it into two parts. Part one, do the runway, do the asphalt. That is critical and that needs to happen. The lighting systems are functioning, but old and they're incandescent lights, so they draw a lot more power. Um, we split it not as one individual project, but as two projects in one, the second one being replacing all of the lighting systems. Um, that way, if the asphalt had been significantly higher than anticipated, um, that would, we would make sure that part got done, but then the lights could have potentially been dropped off if they were, uh, if just the overall cost, construction costs were gonna be too high. And so we got very favorable bids, and so we're able to not only re-upgrade or replace the existing runway, uh, re- rebuild it in place, but replace the entire lighting system for the airport.
Well, that's fantastic.
Great.
And there're gonna be L E Ds, so they'll significantly reduce electric bills.
Is Mick out there dancing?
He's always dancing. He, he never stops.
Well, I mean, he's worried about the lights, uh, but.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Armstrong Consultants as airport project engineers for the runway rehab. I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Sorry, I saw your hand go up when the motion came, so I wasn't sure. Protocol. Um, okay, so that takes us through our action items. We're gonna move out of action into our work meeting, and, um, item number nine, I noticed the Mortons weren't here, and then I just went quickly back through, uh, my email, and we were toggling between the first and the eighth, and so I made a mistake on this agenda. So I would like to move item number nine to the next meeting's agenda on June eighth. I don't know if we need to vote on that, or if I can just do that.
You have to amend the agenda.
Okay, so I need a motion to amend the agenda to move item number nine to June eighth.
Or just table it.
Table it.
Just table it. Table it.
Okay.
I move that we table discussion on, on Lyons Park and Mortenson family.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, item number ten, this is an update on the Old Rock Church project.
Can we give that?
Sure, unless Jim does.
No.
Okay. Thought it might be faster, Jim. Jim, can you do it?
I take that first.
He could probably do it.
I will be.
Pretty well.
Hey, all I did, my biggest job was Dan's camera ran out of batteries, and I had to go to three places to find the batteries, so that, that was the extent of my contribution.
I'll be really, really quick. Um, we had a very, we had a, part of this work in order to prepare the plans in order, the, the engineering plans, eventually the construction plans for the work that needs to be done to, um, to shore up and, and rehab the Old Rock Church is, there's some questions about exactly the con- the nature of the construction. There's only so much that you can obtain by looking at the outside, and when I say outside, I include looking at the inside, but looking to see what's in the walls. You're not sure how the joists are attached to the rock walls and so forth, and so for them to make this, I'm not gonna use the wrong words, in order to seismically enhance the building, they do not, you like the word earthquake proof. In order to seismically enhance the building, they have to understand the nature of how that is done, so that they can design the plans to, to make improvements, which means we have to do some, they use the word demolition, which is a really scary word, um, but we have to do some very specific, um, inspection of the building. They, the architect won't do that themselves. They wanna have the city do that, so, um, we have a, a fiber optic camera with L E D lights on it, so we, we were going to do this really by drilling. We were able to actually, um, inside an access panel in the basement, we, we, we were able to drill, but we couldn't really tell exactly what was going on, so we cut a hole, which is what they tell us to do, and they will fix that when that's done. You can't tell that there's a hole there, because it's inside in an, in an access panel. They will fix that lath and plaster when the construction is actually done, but we were able to obtain a wealth of information on, on how the floor joists are tied together. Um, just an interesting note, um, they really liked, and this is the, this is a non-technical term. I believe this came from Molly's head.
It came from my head, then Jim corrected me, because he knew his, he knew.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Because, because I can't remember what it wa- anyways, basically.
I said it was tinker toyed, and he said.
The Lincoln log.
Lincoln log.
So basically what they do, they take, they take beams, and they notch them, and they notch both beams, and then they put them together. It's super precise. It's amazing what those pioneers did, and they were able to basically do a Lincoln logging, a, a joist, um, um, compounding, I don't even wanna try to use technical terms, but it was very enlightening. We were able to see how the, how the floor joists were pocketed into the stone walls, and we're able to see exactly the width of the floor, how they tie that in, 'cause they needed really to know how the stage worked, and, and ultimately how the mezzanine connects into the, the stone walls, so that they can properly design it. We also did a, a pretty in-depth inspection with specific instructions from the engineer, what they needed to know on the, on the bell, the bell tower and the bell itself, um, so that ultimately that could be designed, maybe straightened on the bell tower, maybe not, we're not sure, but we now have, they have all the information they need, including, hopefully, they can figure out the weight of the bell by the stamp that was on it, and how it's all tied into the beams. Um, the, the more we looked, the, the more we realized that that old building was built really, really well. It was not designed for earthquakes. It was designed for gravity, and it was built really well for gravity. So what, when they, what they do to improve it, so that it is, works with the, with all of the torsion and the forces that are involved in an earthquake, um, it'll be, it'll stand for a long time, plus, of course, the roof work and all the other work that'll be done for, for A D A access and all that, so, uh, we had a really good experience. Took us about three and a half hours, took a ton of pictures, and the, uh, the engineering company, specifically the structural engineer, was very pleased with the amount of, um, information that we, that she now has to work with as they come up with their recommendations, so that's the update.
Team of, team of three, and we got her whole list done and didn't have to really do, we, none of us liked exploratory demo. We didn't like that.
It was up to them. We would've cut about four holes, and we cut one hole, and we were able to obtain everything we needed from that. Well, we, we do need to go and take a board off, and other than that, we're almost done.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The bell, is it original? 'Cause the bell tower is not, but they had just the bell up there. Is this the same bell, or is this a different one that's?
It appears, we had that discussion, that the bell may have been in the attic and then moved into the bell tower.
Well, originally, there was a bell by itself up there. No bell tower, you know.
Right.
Covering it. It was just there by itself, and so I was wondering if that was the same bell.
I know the bell said Cincinnati on it. That we could easily read.
But I, I think you're right, David, 'cause I think that, that's the original bell. And then they built the tower. Yeah, they had that, that post, that the bell was just. Yeah. Hanging by itself.
Right.
And then when they put the steeple on, then they moved the bell. Steeple, there, I was trying to think. Okay. Then, then they moved the bell inside the.
Yeah.
Inside the. I, that's what I was wondering, if. Yeah. If they got a new bell when they did that. Just to let you know, David, going up to the bell tower is every bit as scary as it was when you were nine or ten, 'cause that's accurate. It's. Did you ring the bell? No, Dan wouldn't let me.
Rude.
I didn't tell him he couldn't ring the bell. While my head was up right next to it, I'm glad he didn't, but.
But, uh, not to take any of Dan's steam, but in looking through that place, like in the, in the steeple, there was the, our tech had some concerns about dry rot and, and rot in, in that area. Dan couldn't find any. Those beams are still rock solid. There, there's not, uh, any decay that we could see up there, and those pioneers were really smart. They put knot holes right next to the wall and covered them with tin can lids, so you just had to pry that out, and then Dan could put the camera down right up against the wall and take all the pictures he needed, so.
Bet that was cool.
Yeah, it's a neat place.
And, and, and just, just so, 'cause people wondered, 'cause it looks, you can see the tower is leaning, and you kinda wonder, is the whole roof sagging, and, and what's happening is, is the tower has literally, 'cause they built all those things, they would notch out a beam, it was like a notch and tab si- situation, the tower has actually just sagged within its own joints, but not. The tower has actually just sagged within its own joints, but not because the roof has sagged, just the tower itself has sagged.
You look at the joints and you can see on one side, it's like, uh, three quarters of an inch and on the other end of the lap joint, it's solid. And so,
Good.
It doesn't look like, I mean, I'm not worried about it falling over.
So, it's just deceiving the way it is.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, uh.
So, the decision still has to be made. Do they try to right the roof? Or do they just, or the, not the roof, but the bell tower? Or do they just structurally make it solid in the position that it's in? Or do they completely disassemble it and completely reassemble it? So, these are the kind of the cost decisions the city will make when it comes time to actually do the repair, but.
Maybe those, uh, knot holes were for future wiring that they were contemplating.
They might, oh, there's, there's a few out in the middle and.
Did they have an elevator shaft planned in?
No, I don't think so.
I was just thinking that.
I think they had one of those, uh, hay lifts that they ran out and just hay forks and lift you up and put you in the top.
Alright, it was all very reassuring and by the end, we all felt really great as we do about the building and we were assured that, you know, there were no surprises and everything felt really positive coming out of that. Um, so, if you don't have any other questions, any other questions? Okay. We did ask them for some kind of storyboard that they could have available for Old Rock Church days so that we could have a little more information about the project available to the public if they're interested in kind of knowing more about what's going on with that. So, they said they would try to have something prepared for that, for that weekend. Um, so, moving on to item number eleven, the Perron Pool update.
Okay, I can't promise that this will be short, cause there's a lot of items and there may be some questions. Um, uh, first of all, Public Works has been awesome. They have been up there busting their tail. Um, they don't, they take a lot of flack and they don't get enough credit for the things they do. Um, they've been doing a lot of work. We had a anonymous donor step forward and say, "I will donate all of the labor to redo the concrete deck" and all the concrete that we're gonna do with the landscaping, which is just massive. That is, it, that's, that's just huge. If anybody wonders why we got in with, with, um, jackhammers and heavy equipment and removed all of the concrete, that's why. We, we wouldn't have been able to afford it otherwise and, um, so, it has been quite an undertaking. Um, we pulled out all the decking, of course, in there with the jackhammer, some of the coping stones. We needed to redo some of the coping stones, they had, there was cracking, some of them had lifted, you know, half of an inch. We were gonna have to fix that anyways. This made it so some, especially the ones that were already loose have really come loose. Um, exposed some of the problems with, we had cracking in the plaster in a couple of spots on some corners. We literally had plaster fall in and so, we're gonna have to repair the plaster, we have to repair the coping stones. Depending on the budget, um, especially now that we've had somebody step forward with this significant donation, we may have enough budget to actually replaster the pool. Um, everything is kind of starting to come into a focus. Um, it, we've had, we've had donations, we've had donations of time. A- as far as, um, as bidding and things like that, if we've had a contractor come forward and say, "Listen, I'm gonna go ahead and get, donate labor" or "I'm gonna give this to you at cost" or something like that, we have basically, um, especially the, the local Perron contractors, we haven't forced them to bid against each other to see who will donate more, we've just accepted that, said, "Yep, we'll, we'll be happy to work with you and have you do that." Um, we wanna find some way to honor these, um, the businesses and then additionally, all the volunteers. Um, we've had several volunteer groups. Stephanie Robinson has been basically just calling people specifically and saying, "I need you to come here and here and here and come here." And we've done some, some targeted volunteer work. Uh, we had the, the high school seniors come and repaint the one wall, and I'll talk about that wall in a second. We've had a lot of volunteers, contractors, I just wanna point out all that. It's been, um, frankly, um, a little bit overwhelming, um, in how great a community can come together when we, when we really want to. Um, the Perron Strong organizers have, have said, "We would like to assist in raising money." And so, uh, the perfect project for, especially for social media and everything, we figured was, we've ma- gone ahead, made the decision to put in a, a climbing wall, which we talked about. Uh, we decided not to do a slide, um, for several reasons, as we talked to pool experts. Um, if you put like kind of a twisty slide and, 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 and the exit of that slide is into the deep end, you get little kids that get disoriented as they go in and then you end up with all these life-saving, um, um, a- attempts or whatever you wanna call them, events. And so, um, for half the cost of a slide, we were able to do, um, what we call the, they call it an Aqua Zip Inn. It sounds really intense and really crazy, but it's actually fairly mild. Um, but they say that they're immensely popular and it's a really good replacement for a diving board. Um, basically, it's a, it's a very, it's a cantilevered, um, system that, that is attached to the side of the deck with a pad, with like a rubberized pad that they stand on, they grab a rope and they, they basically do a little zip line out into the pool. Their feet are about six feet off, six inches off the ground, off the water level. So, it's not like they're coming in fast or they're coming in really high. In fact, you're able to put one of these over a depth of, the mi- the minimum depth is only four feet. We're gonna be putting ours into the deep end, but it's not like this is some crazy thing, but the kids love it. So, we're gonna have an Aqua Zip Inn, we're gonna have a climbing wall. That's what, uh, Perron Strong is fundraising for. Um, super excited about that, we're of course sad to see the diving board go, but we feel like this will be a good enhancement to really replace kind of the fun aspect of the pool. And, um, so, we're working towards that. Um, I talked to already about the coping and the plaster. We have to get the coping stones redone before we pour the cement. So, we've just been in emergency mode, trying to find a contractor that can come in right now. This is a busy time of the year for pool contractors that can come in and redo the coping stones so that we can then go ahead and, and pour the concrete. Um, we have been absolutely scrambling, when I mentioned Public Works, we've been absolutely scrambling to test all of the piping and to redo conduit. We, while the concrete is off, is our one chance to really do anything we need to underneath the concrete. Speaking of.
I was wondering what that was.
If you can't, you might not be able to see this, this is a crack, it's about an eighth of an inch. It goes almost all the way around this pipe. This was found in this exact condition, of course, it was cut out, that was underneath one of the skimmers. Um, this is about a four foot depth level, so you can imagine the hydraulic pressure at four feet and how much water would've been leaking out of this. This is one of the significant, so with the deck off, we're able to really inspect the piping and, and figure out where some of the leaks are coming from. And we had, we were leaking from one of the lights and we know we were leaking a ton of water from this. And, um, and we have another leak which we've, I, I know we got it, it's just that we didn't, it was in the, in the piping that was taken out that went to the kiddie pool. So, there's no water leaking over there anymore, but it was really wet under there when we took it out. And, um, I'm sure we got that leak as well, so I'm gonna pass that along. I'm gonna keep this on my desk. So, as we ta- uh, uh, there was a lot of conversation about how this pool was dropping quarters of an inch a day. Um, I bet you, the majority of it was this one leak, which, I mean, we would've been, we were talking about dye testing, we were talking about, you know, um, cammering and doing all these different things to find that, um, at least that one, if not others.
That was by the diving board.
That was by the diving board.
In that, what, northeast corner by the.
On the northwest, well, on the northeast of the diving board.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause we knew there was a leak there.
We knew we had a leak there, the skimmer itself had cracks that we could see in it. Um, those skimmers are, do not come out easily. They were poured in place, the concrete of the pool goes out and around with, I mean, it has been a job to try and get those out, but now is the time to replace them. So, we have new skimmers, um. Um, I ca- I, I'm really pleased, um, I mean, the timeline of it is brutal, it really is brutal. It's like you, you got, it's like a puzzle that keeps changing as you go, especially with the funding part of it, with people coming forward and saying, "I'll help with this." And then it's like, um, I think the theme of this whole pool is "If You Give a Mouse a Cookie." Has anybody ever read that book?
Yep.
Um, we've been like, "Well, since we're here, since we have the deck off, since, let's, we, we might as well do this and while we're there, oh, we might as well do that and, and while we're here, we really need to do that for the, for the incremental cost." But that's also how a project, in engineering term, it's called scope creep, right, my engineer buddies? Um, so, we've been, we've been careful, the, the, scope creep will lead to financial overruns if you're not careful. It'll also keep pushing your timeline out. So, that's why this has been kind of difficult, but anyways, uh, we do have the pool full of water right now for testing purposes. We are, we are absolut- we have, we have our construction equipment there and we have caution tape up and we have our, our, our cones and so, um, we're gonna do some more testing tomorrow to make sure our chemical inserter and everything works. We're gonna drain the pool again, so, um.
But when it's kinda hard to see if it's leaking or anything's going on, when it keeps raining.
Ah, yeah, we got ready to test the leaks and then it just did that crazy downpour yesterday. I'm like, "Are you kidding me?"
And then again today, it's like, yeah.
But I think we're, we're feeling pretty good about it, um.
It's gonna rain tomorrow, too.
We're gonna be putting new cabinets in the building, um. Are we okay to mention David's opinion?
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, so I won't mention. At the end, we'll have a big reveal and we'll promote those businesses that have helped. We have somebody that's gonna donate new cabinets, we have a contractor that's gonna give us a, a significantly discounted rate on putting new epoxy flooring, like we were thinking about on the deck, we're gonna do inside the building in the locker rooms and everything. If you remember, we had some carpet in one place, we had these anti-skid, these rubber mats that were just nasty, cause they would get, anyways. So, it'll be really, um, what is the word, it'll be ant- antiseptic, it'll be a really clean, really good anti, I mean, traction, not antitraction, the opposite of antitraction. And it'll be something that we can clean easily and it'll be really good, so. Um, uh, we're, and I wanna give a, the credit where credit is due. Uh, we were talking about doing a concession stand on the deck facing the pool and I believe it was Heather that's on planning commission, she said, "W- if you're gonna do a concession stand, why don't you make it so that you could access the concession stand from in, not only in the pool, but also from in the park?" So, if people are in the park playing, recreating, doing family reunions, they could come up, they could buy ice cream, they could buy stuff like that, which of course enhances some revenue opportunities. So, we're actually going to, on the east side of the building, we're gonna, we're gonna basically knock that out or add on to that and have a window that is inside the pool and a window that faces the park so that we can sell concessions to inside and outside. Um, on the subject of concessions, um, reach out to those businesses that you know of that may have some interest. From a management and operational standpoint, one thing that rec- rec. centers do for cities and stuff is a good practice, as long as you can find a good partner. Rather than do it yourself, you subcontract that out. Basically, if we can find somebody that has the, the business license, food handlers permit, whether it's local restaurants or, you know, some of these, um, some of these nonprofits that, that, that are raising money for, um, a, a church or something that, that have a food truck or an event at the fair and they have all that stuff set up, I would like to throw it out to bid and get a, get a c- somebody in there to run our concessions for us and then we just take a percentage of the gross. It means the city doesn't have to staff it, we don't have to be buying all of everything, remitting sales tax and dealing with all of that stuff. If we can subcontract that out and get a, a, a percentage of the revenue, then we will have accomplished all of our goals and not had the headache of it. So, um, talk around to people, companies in town, restaurants, food trucks, um, those that do, um, those type of things at the fair and, and stuff and, and see if we can get a partner for this year. Um, I think that it's, this is gonna be a, uh, kind of a, something that we didn't really plan on being, um, a shining light about this pool is, is a revenue opportunity, not to mention the enhancement to the park. I mean, especially if we have, I, I expect this year for us to be at capacity and having kids waiting outside. In fact, w- we're just, we, we've gone through interviews for hiring a, a manager. In our interviews, we're talking with a manager, "How are you gonna be able to deal with being at capacity and, and, and dealing with, you know, what are your, your mechanisms or your ideas so that we can be fair and orderly in how we give kids a chance to come into the pool?" I think we're gonna have kids waiting outside the pool. And if they can sit there, they can, we can have a picnic table with a shade and, and they can play in the park, they can buy a, you know, a, whatever, uh, icy or whatever from the, from the thing, I think it'll enhance our park. So, great idea, shout out to Heather.
Yeah.
Um, it's just a matter of making it work and I think we're, we're well with, within the plans on that. I just kinda ran through a whole bunch of stuff, there's probably questions, any questions?
Do you wanna talk about any of the walls or any?
Walls, yes, walls was at the top and I skipped it, cause I was excited to talk about the donations and contractors and volunteers. Um, uh, we were planning on taking down two of the walls, um, at least the top half and, and cutting it in. We had the, we had the company come out and cut the walls. Um, and what we left, we, we were always gonna leave the west wall and put murals on it. Um, one of the things we found as we actually started knocking down the walls and cutting into them is that they didn't have a lot of, um, rebar and they had no grout in the, in the upper part, in the block wall part that's on top of the, the concrete, um, pony wall or shoulder wall or whatever you wanna call that. In fact, what, it almost appears as though they had that forty-two inch wall around the pool and then they went in later and drilled in about every, you know, ten feet or fifteen feet. They drilled in and put a piece of, I'm gonna call it rebar, cause it's not actually rebar. It, it was, it looks like they took apart an old screen, a grate, and they just put this piece of metal that looks like this and they put a block wall on top of it. They, there was no grout in that wall, there was, wasn't any horizontal tie-ins. Um, in fact, we were able to quite easily push it down. Um, we pushed down the first section just by hand, so that's kinda scary. Um, the one wall that we were going to leave standing and put murals on, there was a big crack all the way from the top down through the block and the crack was, there was a little bit of settling. Well, part of that wall was still wiggling, we talked to a block expert and he's like, "I can't really stabilize that with just grout." Um, and so, we made the decision to go ahead and take down the top part of that wall as well. We could still r- put a Perron Pool thing on the bottom part of it if, like we planned on. Um, but we were gonna do a big mural there, so now we're talking about maybe doing a mural on the building that faces the pool. Um, we may do, just paint the entire thing, including the doors, or we may also do some panels, a mural with panels that they could paint them offsite and come and, and hang them up. So, we're exploring that, we've had four artists ask to be involved in the mural project, so we're excited about that. We just need to have a committee and, and if anybody wants to volunteer, um, and figure out exactly kinda what we wanna go for. We've had some samples submitted by the artists and maybe some ideas. So, um, that's the, that's the deal with the walls. Um, we are gonna have to make sure we do wrought iron all the way around, um, so that we are up to code, um, for that, so. Um, we were hoping to leave the one wall, but it just wasn't gonna be safe.
About the storage shed on the west that you're talking about.
So, we're talking about moving the heater around to the end. And I, when I say the end, I mean the end that, that faces the street and coming out there. Like, we're gonna go out on the other side for a concession, we're gonna come out this end for the, and, and we'll have like some outdoor storage, which it has to be ventilated and everything to let the exhaust from the heater out, but it will really open up the front of the pool. And, um, the same concrete donati- donator is like, "I'll just do the concrete out in front of the building as well, like, I'll just do it all." So, we're gonna have new concrete all the way around, we're gonna, we're gonna cut back the grass and, and, and put in some rock and tie it into the front of the concession stand and, um, and put in some, some places for people to sit. Um, we wanna have like some, some benches, we've had some people that wanted to put maybe a memorial bench and so, we're gonna do some of that in the front along the building. Um, we're gonna have to redo the roofing because we're extending these out and so, we wanna put a metal roof on, a very colorful metal roof, which will go kinda with the colorful umbrellas and all that stuff, so it should really make it pop. And, I mean, if you think about it, we're gonna have a new, we're gonna have a new deck. Hopefully, we, we can afford and do new plaster and we'll have new roof and the building kinda redone. I mean, the old bones are still there, the old, the old pool itself was good enough that we could do this. Um, we're really not changing much on the inside, other than just kind of a facelift, lipstick on a, on a, on a pig.
That's what I was just gonna say, I was like, I don't know if that's appropriate.
I shouldn't have said that, but my point is, we should get easy ten years out of this building. If not, we can set aside money and ten years from now, we'll have some money saved up, we can get another ten years out of it, we can build a new one. At that point, it's gonna be really a question of capacity, I think, so. Exciting stuff. Uh, awesome employees, awesome community. Um, timeline is, is stressing me the heck out, but we will have something open for the fourth. We may not have all of these things done, but we will have it open, even if the concession stand is not yet fully done and it's open soon or open next year or something, we will. We will have a pool open, um, and we may have to continue to work on some of the, the, you know, rope, cording things off and continue to work on it. But we'll see, we'll see, we'll get done what we can.
Do you wanna mention some of the options? You're talking about some of them being Rendles, you know, areas, there's, you know, like those party areas or...
So, we moved the group site, we were gonna have that on the, on the southeast side. We've now decided with kind of the layout, especially if we move that concession stand, we're gonna put the group sites on the north side. Um, we've cut a hole in that wall, a wide hole, and we'll have a, we'll have two group sites that'll be just basically between the pool and the SU head start. And there'll be like a, a, a shade structure with two tables inside and an, and a dedicated area, um, that they can have to, to hold parties. And the nice thing about th- that configuration is if you have a bigger group, you could reserve them both and have that whole area. Um, if we don't have it reserved and we have, um, just open swim and we have a lot of people, we could even open that up for people to use for whatever and then close it when we have it reserved or, I don't know. We are gonna have three cabanas and they'll be in the northeast corner and those will be only for reservation only. 'Cause they'll be, they'll be kinda nice, but they're the type of thing that they'll kinda get beat up if we don't just restrict them to when they're reserved. And so, we'll have a revenue stream to, you know, keep them nice. Um, we are gonna take out one section of the wall completely and that's that northeast section, which will kind of open it up so the cabanas kinda have view in. It was gonna be really, really restrictive, um, and, um, so, we're getting kinda creative with, with the, with the AstroTurf that we'll do. We're gonna do, I'm calling it a peanut, you might call it a kidney, of AstroTurf, which is gonna be kind of near where the kiddie pool was. That will re- preserve the option in the future to do something if we wanna do some... We're gonna, we're leaving the piping in, we're gonna stub it up, so we have a, we have a pipe to send water there and to take water back to the equipment room and we're gonna run a, a power there as well. Just gives us options in the future if we wanted to do something down the road there. Um, we don't have anything right now for the kids, for the kiddies to do. Um, I think we wanna consider maybe saving up our pennies and potentially doing a zero entry sometime in the future. Zero entry is something we can do without adding a whole new set of equipment, because it's one body of water. Um, but it would cost a lot of money. In fact, if you give a mouse a cookie, "Well, while we have the decking off, maybe we should put a zero entry." That would cost more money than we have and, um, the timeline would be blown. We wouldn't do it this year, there's just no way we could open. 'Cause they'd have to come in and form that all up and, and the cost would be prohibitive. This, we're able to do, everything I've described with the money we have and I think that we just consider future options. But I do expect young mothers and fathers to say, "Hey, what, what options are we thinking about in the future for little kids?"
And meanwhile, we think the turf peanut will be popular, people can lay on it with their beach towels and it'll be a nice little splash of green and it'll be a comfortable place to be by the pool and sit, not on concrete.
We'll put a couple of big umbrellas over the top of it, it'll be nice.
Is that what you meant? Kind of that outer area? Your update on options out there, how they've shifted a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right, if there's no, or if there are no other questions on the pool, we can move to item twelve, which is reports, updates, old business follow-up by elected officials and staff. You wanna start?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, other than, Dan's mentioned the, uh, Old Rock Church. Uh, I want to, uh, take a moment, you know, Dan's been talking about all the volunteers and at the pool and how important that is. I want to, uh, take this opportunity to thank Kristen Robinson, Dennis and Christine Louder, Ann Gurr, Justin Dally and the Public Works for the work on the Veterans Monument. Uh, they donated their time, their money, their effort for the Veterans Monument. Uh, also, at this time, I wanna especially thank Cleve Matheson. He has been involved in this for years. We've been working on this Veterans Monument for well over ten years, trying to get our financing and a design and get the Veterans Monument up and running. Uh, Justin Dally has spent a lot of time down there helping, working and did a good job on that. Uh, you talk about donations, that entire thing was done with donations from the veterans. Uh, so, I, I just wanna thank these people for their efforts and their service to the veterans of Peril and... And once again, this is a good place and it's good because of people like the ones I've mentioned. That's all I have there.
Thank you. I even saw you down there with a shovel. And it does, it looks beautiful.
It is, it is really nice.
Very pretty.
And the memorial service at the cemetery was really nice and well, well attended.
Yeah.
I mean, there had to be at least a hundred and fifty to two hundred people there.
Wow.
I guess, it was great. Other than that, my, our power board was canceled and I don't have anything else.
Okay, all right. Um, the summer recreation program is in full swing now that school is out. Um, they've made some cute little booklets that you can pick up at the visitor center and at the city library. Um, there's all sorts of fun things, I can't even tell you everything, but there's scavenger hunts every Saturday through, oh, I might have lied, every Friday. Either Friday, every Friday or Saturday to the end of July, that's super fun. Uh, movies at the Aladdin Theater and just a lot of fun things for everyone to do. So, go pick up a thing and go have some fun this summer. Your turn.
Um, I think, the plan's only met, but everybody received the, uh, attachments about the, the zone change, the, uh, billboards and the, uh, hard surface. So, I just suggest look at that, 'cause, uh, they had the public hearing on that and so, it's gonna come to the council to make a d- decision on their recommendations, one way or another. So, I just suggest that you look at that.
Will that be coming next council meeting, do you think, as to do something with it or...
We've got, I mean, there is a...
Hard surface and billboards will.
I just saw all of...
Zoning, the zoning request has been withdrawn by the sponsor.
Okay.
They're going to come back to planning and zoning, asking for a different zone. They, they were coming for a commercial zone, they did not receive a positive recommendation, they received a negative recommendation, so they decided to withdraw and they're gonna come back with an R-three request.
That's the Crimson Hills area?
Yeah, that's that hotel. So, the other two will come, that one won't.
Okay.
Yeah, been there, done that, David.
Okay, um, let's see, the Mix Pond is just a, a work in progress. It's, 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 it's doing good. People are fishing, the water's good, we're getting, uh, just, oh...
And you're picnicking down there, I was gonna stop and say something to you the other day.
Yeah.
On the fence.
Anyway, and, and the, uh, the planting is, we're getting the forb, or the broadleafs are coming, the grass is struggling, but I think it's, it'll be okay. And I think there's, yeah, things are coming together there. I talked to somebody today about the water and Doug Fox about the pipe, he's still working on that, so...
So, Doug on our water board, he, he, he asks me all the time, "What can I do, what can I do to help?" And I said, "Doug, you gotta find us some pipe." We were, we were, we've been kicking around an idea about running some poly pipe from the existing, 'cause the, the, the ki- the, um, the ditch company, the canal company, they hate it to turn off the water, drain their line while it puts water into the thing and then open it up and shock the system. So, if we can come up with a way that, that just meters water out to the pond without having to do that and give us the water right that we have for the pond. So, we're looking at something and I said, "Doug, you gotta go find some cheap pipe." And so, he's like, "I have a son that works at a pipe place, I'm gonna see if they'll donate or do something." So, anyways, he also wants to maybe do some sort of a water hammer thing, he could do a fountain or some, he's, he's looking at some stuff.
A little work as a narrator.
A narrator, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, no, I think that's, he's acting like he's gonna be able to do that, so, I hope he does. But, um, I just wanted to make a comment about Memorial Day. Sharon mentioned the program, which was very good, but I talked to Councilman Shirliff about this. I, I went up, uh, Monday evening, I had to tend a grave that it didn't, it wasn't being tended. Anyway, the light was just shining perfectly, those flags were just, there was a perfect breeze. There isn't a setting that can compare to that. We've had some droughts and some fires and things, but to see the greenery, but to see those flags and those crosses and, you know, the homage that's paid to those veterans, plus our ancestors there. There isn't anywhere, I don't think, in, 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 anywhere that can, you know, even compare. And, you know, I, 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 I was lost for words. I, I, I took, I've got pictures, my wife came up, I told them to come up, I told my veteran sons, son-in-law and son, to come up and see that. And, you know, that cemetery was beautiful. There is no question, it was beautiful. And, you know, Kristen Robinson, like you said, with her work up there and, you know, everybody's, I, I just can't say enough about the volunteers and the people that have done...
Need to tell you this, David. Almost five hundred crosses and flags. Saturday morning, when we went up there, we s- s- uh, set five hundred, almost five hundred crosses and five hundred flagpoles in less than an hour with the volunteers up there. We went through there like, you can't believe.
You can't say enough about that.
And then, taking them down, people came up, helped us load them up, take them down, we were done in about an hour. That's the kind of volunteers, that's what Peril and's about. And I agree with you, David, there's not a prettier place.
No.
The only one that can even compare is Arlington.
Yeah.
And that, I'm here to tell you, that is the prettiest cemetery.
It is, and not to take away from the veterans and paying, you know, respect to them, but it was everybody that pays respect to all their ancestors and their progenitors, you know, that...
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's, it's something that doesn't happen everywhere. And, you know, it was beautiful, that, that cemetery, that cemetery's beautiful. So, those that are involved, those that have done so much work, they need to be recognized. And it, yeah, it, it's a p- it's a, it's a, um, sacred place. That's all there is to it. So, and it looked great, you were up there, I mean, Jim, and I talked to you and I just, I was lost for words. I really, I mean, it, it really affected me, it really did and I pre- I just appreciate that. We're, we're blessed, we're blessed with the people that, and what they do here. So, thank you, thank you.
So, I don't wanna rain on, on Dave and Jim's parade, there was an issue raised with the dandelions. Um, this has been a bad year for dandelions and they've, they frankly kicked our trash. The, and, but I want everybody to know that we're, we're working on it. Um, Justin has, has been running all spring, we've had him on special projects, he's helped out with the flood prep work, he's been helping with the veterans. Um, he has since sprayed all the dandelions and it's a multi-year thing and we'll stay on top of it. Um, I just wanted to, to bring it up, um, nobody works as hard as Justin, he, he's great and, and so, I don't want him to feel like, like, but I just wanted to bring it up, 'cause I know there were some that were... There was a lot of dandelions, I tell people, you should go look at my yard, it's, it's pretty bad this year, but...
Trouble is, you cut it and they're back up the next morning.
We had it, we had to...
To have people complaining about dandelions.
The cemetery ready to go and they popped out, so... It is what it is, I just, I didn't wanna rain on the parade, but...
Okay, I've got to say this, I've said it before.
Oh, I've opened it.
Every, we had, and now you've heard it from me before, but we had a LDS church leader come here. Before he would address us, he said, "Take me to your cemetery." So, we took him up there and he looked at that and then he, he came to us and says, "I always go to the cemetery first to see what kinda people I'm dealing with." Uh, because I can tell how they have respect for their ancestors and that tells me what quality and caliber of people. He says, "There is nowhere that I have ever been that has done such a tremendous job with their cemetery in respect to their ancestors." So, I think that says a lot for this community. That says a lot, because he said he is, he does it all the time and he says, "There is nowhere like this cemetery." So, I think that needs to be noted.
And this isn't a...
Damn the dandelion, no kidding, let's worry about something important.
So, speaking of something important with the cemetery, we do need to finish the wall. Um, we, we've been getting grants and we've been finishing that wall around. We do have the, um, some of the materials to finish that and, um, we've had somebody say that they wanna assist with that and we'll continue to go after the grant. But, I'm, I'm really hoping that this next year, we can make some more progress on that as well. We have the capstones and we have the block and we have the materials for the wrought iron. They're not pre-done panels, they have to be literally all completely built, custom-built for each section, but, um, if we can get some assistance with that, or even if we can't, we'll get a grant and we'll, we'll do it. So, that's definitely on our agenda.
Well, maybe we can get, like, the pool, some volunteers, some people that will help.
We, we have a, we have a local contractor who said he wants to help, so, we're gonna explore that. Um, the only other thing that I have is, we haven't come out of this flooding season unscathed. Uh, we did during the, the real high water that ran, um, we've had a lot of water come off that mountain. We've been extremely blessed and extremely fortunate that it would, it would warm up just enough and then cool down. Um, we did not have, we did not have the real high water that we were worried about. However, we have a lot of that flood channel, which is, which is potato dirt and it is not armored. Um, I'm convinced that had we not gone in and done and opened it up wider, especially in the areas behind the subdivision we've been so worried about, that we would've had, um, some real problems. On down from that, we ended up, we did end up having some real problems that threatened some, um, infrastructure, um, specifically the, the irrigators pipe. We came this close to losing that pipe into the flood channel. I mean, I was sent a text at four thirty, um, Leo Barton said, "Look at this, we need to do something with it about this." I ran out and there was a big section that was completely exposed, like, maybe fifty, sixty feet, that was sagging, it was hanging. And there was another large section that was about ready to come out. Uh, Rick Anderson's bridge was being undermined significantly on both sides of the bridge. Um, we had, we had conduit exposed, Rick's lateral was broke. Um, I called the guys, this was on a Thursday, maybe it was a Wednesday, and I said, "We've gotta haul riprap, we've gotta work on this right now." So, we worked till dark and, and put a Band-Aid on it. The next morning, we had, we worked all day long from eight in the morning till ten o'clock at night again. And we got it riprapped and patched and we got their pipe back on and running so that they could plant and, and irrigate. But, we need, when we get the water level low, we've gotta get in and do that riprap like we were planning on doing in the spring that we weren't able to finish. Uh, we've been talking to county, this needs to be a county and city effort. If you talk to any of your county reps, tell them, you know, we really need help on this. Um, Western Rock has, uh, a ton of concrete that it, like curb sections and things like that, that they will just give us, plus all the riprap that we've haul, hauled over. Um, we just, we need to go in and, and shape that and we need to put riprap in. Um, we're expecting an early monsoon season, so, what I'm saying is, we were very fortunate that this was as bad as it got. It didn't get any worse, we didn't have block walls and homes falling in, like, really could've happened. It's crazy how fast, once it starts to erode, it just starts to calve, it looks like an iceberg. And every time you have a big section that'll just, 'cause it's, the soil is so wet, it calves and falls in and then the water works its way around that dirt and it just starts to eat... and it just starts to eat it. And- and it's like, in a matter of hours, it'll go like eight feet.
Yeah.
It's- it's crazy. And if that had happened, where those houses were, the- there's nothing you can do. You can't have a track hole where a house is sitting. And- and you can't work from the other side because now it's moving away from you. So, um, like our worst nightmare really could've come true there where those houses were. Luckily, we did not have the erosion problems there. And I attribute that to the fact that we widened it. And so, it didn't have the velocity and it wasn't just water really super high on that- on that, what I'm just calling potato dirt.
Well, I think we need to-
We're not out of the woods, though.
We need to recognize your efforts and your attendance to this issue because had you not been so diligent, it could've been very, like you described, a bad situation. So, thank you, Dan.
Okay, that's my only update.
So, you took one of mine and, um, agree that there's just been a lot of attention. People are trying to kind of figure out everything we have going on. We have a lot going on. And, um, this flood channel's been huge. It's- if you don't know what's happening out there, if you don't realize how much effort is continuing to be put out there by Public Works and our guys have been awesome, um, hauling until the- until- until the night, till they can't haul anymore. At least on one night last week, I thought maybe-
Two nights.
Two nights, yeah. So, two nights back to back. Um, meetings with the canal company, meetings with the county, just really trying to figure out a sustainable plan for that. And, you know, all of us being just heart sick to see all that water go out to Little Salt Lake and trying to figure out how to get in front of monsoons and what that's gonna take just from a logistical, um, standpoint to get that- that water somewhere else, preferably the gravel pit and in that direction. But that's being worked on all the time, just quietly, being worked on all the time, trying to get a solution for that that'll be sustainable for decades to come. Um, in- you may have received in your email a questionnaire about if we would want turf on our football field. I wanted to bring that up. Had a couple of different school board members call me to talk about it. And we have a bond that's already gone through that is for the county. So, it doesn't have anything to do with taking away from one thing, giving to another. But our portion of that older bond, um, we would use to put turf on our football field. So, I did a bunch of research before I felt like I could talk about it. But, I've been told it gets really hot. But SUU put turf on their fields and they don't water them and they don't get too hot and they absolutely prefer it. And it would save a tremendous amount of water. And so, if you haven't filled out what you think about that, that's gonna have an influence on that vote from the school board. So, I would recommend that if you haven't, if it's still open, that you fill that out.
It's open until- you keep talking, I'll find it.
Okay.
Cause I've done it.
Um, also, the P is lit now. I think everyone's probably noticed. It was kind of the big reveal of it being lit blue on graduation night. And then, we were told that it was gonna be gold other than that first night. But then Greg Evans was out of town. I think he was the one who knew how to program it because I noticed it went gold as soon as he got back in town. But you'll notice it's lit every night now. And that's something that, uh, took a team of people, a lot of work and money and effort and cooperation, including Parowan City, to see that happen for this community. And I think it's a wonderful uniting thing. Um, I don't know anyone who doesn't drive and see that there and not- and not feel, uh, how- how different that is to have that P lit at night. Um, as far as fundraising brick, um, finally getting that finalized where we can sell those bricks during Old Rock Church Days. Haven't really found a person to administer that. So, to get us through Old Rock Church Days, I said I would do it. But if there's anyone who would like to either do it or help with that, um, we will have a table to sell those bricks and it would be great to have help with a lot of things that day. If you go on Facebook or just go into the city office and get contacts for the coordinators of that event, there are a lot of, uh, open opportunities to serve there for those two days and it's gonna be a great event. The last piece is our active transportation plan is still in the works and I just added another segment to it because we didn't think about all these kids coming across the street to the pool again. And that's gotten even busier. So, having Chris, uh, Wilsey help us figure out the best place for those kids to cross and how to designate that so we have a better system for getting bikes and foot traffic back and forth to the pool when it reopens. So, that- that plan's in place. We don't have our first iteration of it, but we're adding to it on a regular basis and they're working on it. So, we should have something the council can look at as a preliminary plan pretty soon. Um, probably by the end of the summer, which in the scope of things, will be here before we know it.
Can I add to that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we- we need to consider how that plan ties in going up and over the- the, um, exit seventy-eight to the TA. We have a lot of foot traffic, people walking in from TA into town. And I think we wanna add that into our plan. Um, we have some potential development out there and we have to consider exactly how we wanna tie in sidewalk, trail, something. Um, we just have people walking on the shoulder of the road. At some point, we have to transition from us to UDOT as it goes out and over. So, we need to add that in.
Okay. I'll send that over tomorrow. So, if anyone on the council or in the community have things that they wanna be sure are addressed in that, active transportation, think anything that's non-motorized and getting people to the things and places and amenities that they need to go and where you've seen people walking that you're- or biking that you think doesn't look very safe. And that's what we need to be sure that we include in the active transportation plan. And do we have any staff reports or updates? All right.
Um, that survey needs to be in before five PM tomorrow, June second.
Okay.
And if somebody wants the link, uh, text me and I'll just forward.
Okay.
Do you wanna post it? Because I did call their office and I said, "You have to have a school-aged child." And they said, "No, it just needs to be responded by a unique email address." So, you couldn't respond with like three people from the same household, from the same email address.
Okay. So, am I allowed to post the link online?
They said anybody could respond that lived in Parowan.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. All right. And with that, I have one more. Oh, do we have a closed session this evening? I'm motioning because we don't have Justin here.
I was gonna say, is he here? He's been very quiet.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adjourn and an additional motion that the Golden Knights will win the Stanley Cup.
Wait, someone has to second that and it has to be approved?
Point of order, point of order. We need to discuss this.
Point of order.
So, what's your motion? To adjourn?
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you for coming out and for staying.
Are the Knights in the cup? I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
I don't follow hockey.
They're playing the Panthers.
Florida Panthers. Saturday night, T-.